At 7:01. Want to ask if anybody's recording the meeting besides Lake Cam, Matt, Little Book Gazette? And that's it? Okay. Uh, why don't we go with item number four? Discuss postponing the annual town meeting. Sure, why don't you summarize?
This is the time of year that the selectmen discussed when, uh, we want to post our May town meeting by our bylaws. It's the second Monday in May. And I've checked with town council, and I'm waiting to hear back from the moderator.
He's okay with it.
What about the high school?
It's, um, it's okay.
Okay. Uh, last year we had it on Monday, June 10th. Uh, I think we'll be ready. I'd like to, I'm suggesting the board vote June 2nd. It's up at 7 o'clock. If that's formidable. We, the last several years, the selectmen have waited to have better idea on state aid numbers.
What's the latest that we can have?
June 30th.
Okay. Well, that's fine.
Go into the July 1st without a vote.
Second's okay by me, if it's okay by...
And we can change this if we need to, correct?
Yes.
Right.
So, I'll make a motion to postpone the annual town meeting until Monday, June 2nd, 2014, at 7:00 PM at the Aponequod High School Auditorium.
I second that.
Have you heard the discussion? Karen Dunn, all those in favor?
Aye.
And just for the board's information, you can keep it in your packets. I have a timeline for town meeting, when I need warrants and everything else. At your next meeting, I'll have you vote on the articles that have been submitted. Today's the deadline to submit, uh, law and articles.
A warrant? Okay. Okay, good. All right, let's go to number five. All right, do you want to discuss number five, Aaron?
Oh, sure. Um, so at our last meeting, we talked about putting to paper some, uh, a set of rules, which I think you got a copy of, um, this first page. This is what I drafted, um, that I suggest that we adopt as, as our kind of standing policy relative to the board. Um, anybody have any questions or comments about any of this?
It's, it's pretty much what we do now anyways, but just, it's just a formal document that we're gonna have.
Exactly.
Is this a policy we're gonna do?
Uh, right. All I tried to do is just put down the, kind of, the big picture stuff that we already follow for the sake of having, um, having it in writing, really.
I don't have an issue with that.
I don't, but the, the one page I understand is the other just information.
Correct. Rita forwarded this, this other stuff, um, which was just some more information relative to the Rogers Rules of Order, um, just for your information. The only thing I provided was, was this.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this one page.
So what we're adopting is the one page?
Correct.
Okay.
And then we can modify it as we see fit.
Absolutely. I mean, that's Rule 10. Can be altered, amended, suspended, repealed by a majority, vote of the board. Yeah, you always want that in there.
I'll entertain a motion, man.
I'll make the motion that we end, uh, adopt Aaron's draft. There's not a date on it, but we'll date it today, uh, whatever that is, March 10th.
I'll second that.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion? Should, should we actually state that this is a policy though, or a rules of order? Is that covered?
That's what I was gonna do. Policy, uh, for board of selectmen's meetings, is that?
Rules of order for...
Policy for rules of order for board of, just add policy in the front.
Yeah, you can call it any of those things. I mean, it's, it's, hang on, I think I have, um, I brought the, the other stuff that I used. Lost in the pile somewhere.
Providence had Board of Selectmen rules...
Well, you liked the Bridgewater one.
Yeah, that, that's exactly what I was looking for, that...
Bridgewater had.
You liked the Bridgewater one in there.
We had Board of Selectmen rules of procedure, policy statement.
Policy statement's probably appropriate, I would think.
And West Bridgewater had rules of order of the Board of Selectmen, so that's probably where you got it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So what, what do you want to call it?
Policy statement.
Rules of order? Just as he stated it in the draft?
I don't have a problem with how it, how it's drafted, um, if you are, but if you do, I would suggest policy statement.
Well, how we've done all the planning, Mr. Chair, all of your policies and proceed, we either call it policies and procedures for the selectmen, whether it's the...
Right.
Bad weather, um...
Yeah, make it consistent with, with everything else, I would think. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's why I think we should.
All right.
Okay. Karen, no more further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good job, Darren.
Thanks.
All right. We're still waiting for us to see if we can get a forum of the finance committee. Can you hang off for a few moments? Hang off for a few moments, see if we can get somebody to show up. All right, so, oh, well, why don't we go to number six? This is an easy one, too. Review the draft, political sign policy submitted by the town clerk. Uh, if you remember correctly, or if you remember, the town clerk came to us about a month ago and asked us if, uh, we would put forth a bylaw about town signs, and we thought maybe it would be better as a policy. And this is what she has here.
Don't we already have one that says virtually the same thing? Or is it a couple of sentences different? Uh, I mean, I've read this somewhere.
She submitted it.
Oh, no, before that.
Yeah.
Before that.
Well, all we have in our bylaw for signs is that political signs have to be removed within...
Twenty-four hours. Forty-eight hours.
Forty-eight hours. That's the only thing written down.
I mean, I don't mind, but is it a problem? Why are we, why are we doing a policy? We can write 9,000 policies.
Well, I would say it's number two. Right. And what I, what, uh, Scott brought up at the last meeting, when someone pulls papers to run in an election, it would, you know, the town clerk would like to hand this out because, uh, town clerk and I deal with number two. We get residents of the town that crawl up to complain about political signs, and we have to, uh, search, you know, remember to say town property. Nothing is written down as what the policy is. Not allowed in state or town rights of way. Believe it or not, a lot of people don't know that they have to ask the private homeowners for permission to put something on their property.
Maybe they ought to read, maybe they ought to read that, uh, obviously some man's castle or something like that, get the hell off. But I don't know.
I think it's a good idea to have it in writing. I mean, it's the same, it's like the other thing.
Policy, it's all right.
It's the same thing that, they already do this anyway.
Right.
But at least now, this is something they can hand to somebody and say, this is anything, you know, this is the guidelines relative to using a, a political sign in town.
Okay, I'll make the motion and we accept, uh, the, uh, political sign policy.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Karen Dunn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we're gonna go on to item number, oh, no, on to number seven.
Is there a layout plan that we, I didn't see a layout plan with it. You got it. I didn't even know where it was to do.
Do you want to discuss number seven first?
I don't care.
It should be quick. I'll just lay out one for the whole board. This is the ASBIL, and this is just the first step in the long process. Um, you're not voting for the town for the selection, but it, you're just voting to lay it out.
Where is it?
It's, if you, across from Jennifer Lane on Kingman Street. There's only, I think, four houses on there.
Right. Okay.
And what happens is if you vote to lay it out, this goes to Jeremy Peck, uh, to inspect it, and then it goes to the planning board, and we wait for recommendation back from the planning board. And then you hold a public, a public meeting and vote to approve the layout.
Okay.
So, I guess we... Stand the motion, I guess, to...
Well, don't we, right.
Notice to intend the layout plan, I guess.
Yeah, that's the motion.
Don't we always just go by what the...
I thought we'd just go with what the planning board says and stay out of it.
Right, right. I just didn't know where it was.
We have to lay out a, we have to vote to lay out Spring Brook Lane.
Yeah, the legal process, I gave you the rules.
Right, and they might, they might after reviewing this reject...
Yeah.
Moving forward with it, but this is just kind of a necessary...
This is good, okay, this to get going.
Necessary step.
Right.
This is step one of the layout procedure out of five steps.
Yeah. I only asked because I didn't know where it was. Now I know the street.
I didn't either.
So we just need a motion to lay out the Spring Brook Lane.
Aye. Make that motion to lay out the Spring Brook Lane.
I will second that motion.
Karen Dunn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, item number eight, discuss, uh, actually, we didn't, did we get a letter?
If, if, if we did not, we should, we shouldn't, we should not, right.
This item went on because, uh...
It went on because they had led me, they, they had said that they would write a letter for the March 10th meeting. If they haven't, then we shouldn't be discussing.
Okay. All right, well, we just...
We'll just wait on them.
Wait on that one, right. Request a temporary trail license for 135 Precinct Street, Allen Swanson. Allen Swanson has submitted a renewal request for a temporary trail license at 135 Precinct Street. If, if renewed, his permit would expire March 30th, 2015.
I guess we always ask, or at least I always ask the same thing. Do they have to come before this for this? Is it our policies to do that?
With bylaw.
Bylaw.
And we tried to amend that bylaw, and the planning board didn't recommend it against us.
Oh, that's right. That's right. Yeah, we did, we did do that.
Was it to give it to someone else?
The building inspector, I believe.
That it was at one time.
Oh, I see.
Not an annual.
I guess I make a motion that we, uh, approve Allen Swanson's renewal request for temporary trailer at 135 Precinct St., Street. His permit would expire March 30th, 2015.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? Karen Dunn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What would we like to do for the planning board? I mean, I guess...
I haven't heard back from Maureen, and, uh, it wasn't positive about making it or not, so...
Can, can we go forward with the interviews and...
Yeah, at this point.
And not have a...
A fairness of them.
Not have a, and maybe they can watch on tape, I guess, huh?
Do you have, uh, Maureen's cell phone number? Did you track her?
I don't have it on me. I sent her an email.
I do.
I might have it, too. I don't know.
This is why we're trying to get someone on the finance committee.
One of these people that didn't show, are they up for reelection?
No. Only my guess. If he shows, it's too bad.
He'll have to fly back.
Are these calling?
You didn't meet during those timeframes anyways. You didn't meet much during that timeframe anyways.
Just into March a little.
How long we continue while we're waiting?
No.
Um, number 10. Discuss the reappointment of Joe Seamus to the Oak Colony for occasional technical high school district.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I did put this on your, it is a little early, it's not until May 1st, but Joe Seamus has, he's not, uh, looking to be reappointed this time. So I thought this would give the Board of Selectmen enough time to, um...
Advertise it?
Advertise it in the middle of our Gazette, uh, for letters of interest.
Sure.
Because it will be, again, I believe this is a joint appointment, um, I think this one is with, it is joint with the finance committee.
No, it's with the Lakeville...
No, school.
...members of the school committee and the town moderator.
So it's just to say, um, have we do a letter of interest, and we put this on your agenda closer to May 1st.
Absolutely. I'll make a motion that we do that.
We want a deadline for the letters of interest.
I would say April 15th? I don't know.
Yeah, meeting April 4th. So April 24th is their, is that an April meeting?
April 21st. Oh, wait a minute, no, I think it's 28th. And the appointment needs to be made by May 1st.
Why don't you just do it by April 15th?
Okay.
That gives you a whole month. That's a long time. You might need it.
Answer, no answer?
If we don't get any letters, I'm gonna...
Write the voicemail.
So April 15th, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Second to that?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so who...
No answer.
No answer.
Voicemail.
All right, so why don't we go forward and, um, that we will tie anybody up before we already have.
Yep, I agree.
And you can always watch on tape, right?
And, and tell me how we make the decision, or when we make the decision if the finance committee doesn't have a forum.
We'll probably have to make it at another meeting.
The next.
Joint meeting. We'll have to set up a joint meeting.
Plenty of things to talk about.
Right.
But I've just seen if we're meeting already. Not really.
Haven't been scheduled yet.
Not really.
We will be.
The end of March.
I'm gonna ask you to schedule budget meetings with department heads, so there will be some joint meetings coming up.
So they just missed the first budget meeting, that's all?
Yes.
Okay.
Because the first ones are always preliminary anyways, am I correct?
Well, we, we'll meet with department heads, so it is sort of important to have, um, person, but...
Mm-hmm. Okay. Well, why don't we do that? All right, so first off on the, uh, docket is Steve Olivier. Welcome.
Hi.
How's it going?
Good, how are you?
Good. Sorry, through the chair. You want to take over, Mike?
Reading's in the chair.
Reading's...
Reading's. You want to take over, Mike?
Oh, we're right ahead.
All right, let's, I guess, why don't we, why don't we hear your whole life story from the beginning? Where were you born?
Do you want to go back that far?
Yeah, we need to know everything, Steve.
So that was a child.
Well, I was born in the city of Florida, and I grew up in Somerset until I met my wife in Lakeville, and then we got married, and I lived in Lakeville since, and that was 1982. So I went to the University of Massachusetts at Dartmouth, graduated magna cum laude, had a job after school at Raytheon for a couple of years, and then I got a job at Liberty Mutual after that. I've been there ever since, I've been there for 24 years. I have had my CPA license since 1995, 19 years. I just recently passed the CPCU exam, um, as, as a chartered property casualty underwriter designation, a couple of years back. I am a director of business intelligence, work of information management for Liberty Mutual. Prior to that, I worked for, as, as an assistant controller in finance for 15 years, and then worked my way up to that position prior to that when I started up. What else do you need to know?
Previous experience?
Oh, yeah, I forgot all about that. So town experience. I've worked, I was on the finance committee for eight years. Um, I also represented the finance committee on the regional school committee, although I don't think, yeah, I think it was there, it was established, the regional finance committee at the school. I was on the Board of Selectmen for two years, and I think I represented the Board of Selectmen on the regional finance committee as well. Been appointed to various subcommittees, so many I can't remember all, all of them. I haven't been involved in politics for two years, so I'm well rested.
You sure you want to come back?
Well, ease into it. Finance committee's not the right spot to go.
Okay. Rob is okay with this?
He's fine.
Okay. Any other questions for the board? Any question?
I always find that perhaps the selectmen, certainly myself, uh, speaking for myself, and certainly some of the finance committee people, we take the lion's share of the budget. It's always the schools. And I guess, can you have any, not control, but have any positive suggestions to the schools that they can take to heart? Or is that not something that can be ever accomplished by the finance committee? Not necessarily Steve.
All right, you always have to hold out hope. You can make positive suggestions continually, and I've done that in the past. Sometimes you get their attention, they listen. Now, not all the times do they act on suggestions that you have. Sometimes they have. So I think the best approach is to just continue to give them positive suggestions, let them understand both sides of the view, not only just where they're coming from, but where the town is coming from as well, and what the common sense things to do. I think after time, it does prevail. It takes a lot of persistence in order to make that successful, but there are lots of small, uh, practices that...
Both deep pretty well, so I mean, I worked together on the finance committee a number of years before this. I don't want a question I would ask him at this point. Why do you want to do this again?
You should be asking yourself that question.
Somebody already asked.
Because I care about finances in town. I think I have a lot to offer. It takes a long time to understand the opinions of the finances, especially when it comes to the schools. I think I've got a pretty good grasp of that.
Anything else?
Um, I think generally, we, we're looking at, or having conversations relative to the idea of, it's the perennial favorite, the, um, police station or multi-use building for emergency services. What are your thoughts on that and whether there's a need for that, and if there is, what, you know, what impact that might have?
Well, um, the police station, the guys have done a wonderful job fixing that place up. Prior to them fixing it up, that place was, uh, probably should have been condemned, especially some parts of that, the older part. I think in the meantime, they knew that the town finances weren't in a great position, so they decided amongst themselves to get volunteers to fix it up, and it's done a wonderful job. Hats off to them. But it's not something that is sustainable for the future. It's always been something that we, we have to take a look at and try to replicate and get them into the 21st century. I think that there's, there's a strategic time to do that, and that's when the bonds or the debt within the town starts to tear off. We've taken a look at that in the past, and it, it seems to be a good time to do that so that the impact to the taxpayer is, is minimal. You know, as the, as the bonds go down, and rather than the relief go to the taxpayer, it's something that they're used to paying, that's the time to go and ask for the debt override, for the exclusion, uh, um, to do something with the police station, and therefore it doesn't impact them negatively. But the more you go, and you ask them to contribute more and more and more, then, then it's not, it's, in my opinion, it's not, uh, a good position to put the taxpayers in, because everybody's struggling, even though supposedly, you know, we're five years out of the recession. It's not the same, it's not pulling out of the recession like we have historically. It's still, it's, it's a sideways gradual climb for folks. So you have to kind of weigh that as well at the same time. But there are, there are certain times from an advantage standpoint to do that, and I don't recall what the numbers, but we hadn't looked at it.
Around 2016.
Of when the debt tear off. I mean, it kind of worked the same way for the schools, when they refinanced their debt. There's an opportunity there, and that's why the townspeople were receptive to pass an override then, because that, the impact to Lakeville is going away with that refinancing, but then they're replacing it with, with the override. So, I mean, we've talked about that at the school, too, especially when we did the capital of override in 900,000. I mean, that was, that was a time to do it as well.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thanks for coming on the show.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you very much. All right, next up is, um, George.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I can try it?
Um...
Valapullos?
Uh, Wahaplas.
Was it?
Wahaplas?
Wahaplas?
It's not as bad as it looks.
Okay, step right up.
Sir. Do we stand, or would you rather me sit?
Whatever you more comfortable with.
I'm gonna stand.
All right. We're easy, so.
All right.
Um, why don't you just give a little background about yourself, how long you lived in Lakeville, and, and then we'll ask some questions. How's that?
Sure, sure, absolutely. My name is George Wahaplas. Um, if you want my whole background, I grew up in Dorchester, moved to Canton at about seven years old, lived in Canton for pretty much my, through my high school years. I went to Norwich University for college, graduated also Lake Steeve, I graduated magna cum laude in political science, criminal justice. I minored in English. Aspirations of going to law school. I, I did an internship with a, a law firm, and I realized that was not what I was gonna do. It just wasn't in the cards for me. So, um, I deferred, took a year off, got into banking, and I've been in banking essentially ever since. And I started off as a teller, worked my way up, um, personal banker, assistant manager, business specialist. I went on to a different side of the house where I got licensed in my Series 6 and 63, which is, uh, investments. That came crashing down when the investments started crashing, and I ended up going back to consumer banking, where I've been a banking center manager for probably the last six or seven years right now. So, uh, currently I run Quincy Square, which for Bank of America is one of the largest banking centers in Massachusetts. Um, and I've been there for about four years. So in terms of Lakeville, um, let's see, so Lakeville, I came to Lakeville in 2001, I'm sorry, 2011, um, and, uh, when I, when I got out of college, basically, I settled down in, in Dorchester for a little while, I owned property over there, so, um, met my wife, got married, had a kid, realized that I needed the right structure, the right place to live. Started looking to be in between my parents and her parents. You know, my parents live in Ken, hers live in Mattapoiset, settled in Lakeville, and it's been a perfect fit ever since. I currently have, my oldest daughter is five, she'll be starting kindergarten in the fall, and I have twin, twin girls that are three years old, so total three girls for me. That's, thank you, thank you.
You too.
Looking forward to the teenage years. So now, did I miss anything, or...
Have you ever served on any other boards in any town?
No, I have not. So in terms of experience on, uh, on, on boards, I have none whatsoever. So, um, I know that, you know, listening to Steve speak, I think there'd be a learning curve for me. I also think that when it comes to studies, um, I've always been very diligent, I've[1728.16] I've always tried to go the extra mile. I'm extremely articulate, and I pay very close attention to detail. Additionally, I'd like to say, and my wife will tell you that I'm very persuasive. So when it comes to making decisions and, you know, obviously having to come together as a group, I'm open-minded, but I can also give an argument.
I ask you, why would you like to serve as a member of the finance committee?
Yeah, I think it's important that, you know, being where I am in my career and also in my family life, I think it's important that I take part in my community. Especially now, knowing that I have kids going to college, going to kindergarten and eventually going to college. I think it's really important to serve on, you know, and do as much as I can for the community that I live in.
Any other questions?
No, I think that if you're in the, obviously in the private industry now.
Sir.
And you get into the public sector, there's a certain amount of patience that perhaps is required.
Sure.
I was never quite noted for my patience, but it really is a whole different world where you can't say, "Dammit, you've got to do this." You have to go to them as Steve said, using him as an example, that you go to them maybe 20 times. You never give up.
Right.
Say, "Here's why I think you should do it. Here's the following reason." So it's somewhat frustrating, but somewhat rewarding because you have all of the departmental budgets, because you have, I think we have six unions now and plus some core supervisors and some people that are not in the union. So you have a lot of departments that you're responsible for. We're not responsible so much for the schools, other than to try to do the financing.
Yes, sir.
Supplying that. But it's a frustrating part of it. So we can't go in and say how we'd like things to be done, although I'd never want to take that away from someone. Really, I really think that's a, that's a good, it's a good thing to have. But you'd be surprised how little people might listen to you.
Makes sense, I believe that. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, don't be discouraged if you haven't experienced any of this before because it's not always a bad thing in my eyes.
Thank you.
It brings, it breaks out what the things, as you said, this is kind of steeped in tradition and rules and regulations. And sometimes we tend to look at things one way and one way only.
Right, of course.
Dan, welcome to town and welcome to the meeting.
Thank you.
Magna cum laude. I graduated. As far as it goes.
No, we're old enough to say, we went to college.
We did?
Half of we graduated.
Yeah, well, that was a little different era, but anyway, we digress.
I'm always excited to see people get involved like you are with this because I think that it's really a problem in any community, on the municipal level and on the school level. It's the same people running for the same stuff. So I'm really happy that you got involved by submitting your letter of interest. And I guess, I mean, I guess, only to be fair, I would ask the same question I asked Steve relative to a police department or a public safety building. You know, what are your thoughts relative to the need, you know, in the community? And, I mean, I guess, I'm not as school focused, because I was on the school committee.
Okay.
And I think I have a more pragmatic view. And I don't believe in hope. I think hope is for suckers. And I believe in having a plan and sticking to it, and I believe being persistent. But, you know, I think from the finance side and from the selectman's side, our focus is a little bit more municipal centric. And I'm not necessarily, that's not my cross to bear, the school aspect of it. So that's why, relative to what the needs are of the town, in 2000, just to give you the backstory, in 2007, I think was the feasibility study, correct? Was the last time that the town did a feasibility study relative to the building needs.
Sure.
And I know since then, it's been talked about, and of course, the economy got bad since then. So the funding just wasn't there to do it. But what are your thoughts on that? I mean, what are you?
Yeah, I mean, and again, I don't have all the insight that you all have, so I can only speak to one side of it. I do think that there's a time and place for everything. I believe that, you know, my only experience with the inside of the police station is, there is none actually. I've never been inside, I've never done a tour, and I've never been arrested, thank God. But I can tell you that my experiences as I drive by, I think that this is definitely something that we need to undertake. I think it's definitely something that you need to look at, and we need to build it into the budget. Does it need to happen tomorrow? Probably not. Can it happen in a year? You guys can tell me better than I can. But what I can tell you is, if you just, if we just sit on it and say, you know, this is something we need to do, let's just keep pushing now five years. It's going to come to a point that the building's going to need to, it's just going to be disrepaired to the point that it just needs to be torn down. So when I think about our first responders, I think it's really important to have all the best that we can afford, you know? So I can't say that, you know, should we have the latest and greatest of everything? I wish, you know, I think that we all wish we could. But at the same time, it's a balancing act. And I think that from a finance perspective, and you guys know this stuff better than I do, but is there alternative means of raising the money? I mean, is there people that will support? You know, I know everyone is looking for some sort of donations and fundraisers, but is there anybody that's willing to support at least a portion of it? So it's subsidized for the town. I live here too. I don't want my taxes to go up, but at the same time, there's certain things that our taxes need to go up for. And I think it's inevitable. You know, for anyone that's called the police department and said, "Hey, I need you guys to come down because my next door neighbor is having a wild party," you know, they want the police to respond. We can't, we can't go without it. At the same time, we need to have a facility that's going to sustain our police department, and we need to have officers that want to, that are proud to where they, for where they work and proud for what they do. So I think as I drive by Route 18 and I see the police department, I think that there's definitely room for improvement there. And I think that it's something that will ultimately have to come up again. From what I understand, you guys have done a great job getting it to the point that it is right now, but at some point, we're going to have to decide on more than that.
Anybody else?
Always loved the I N E that that was about at one time.
Oh, it was? I wondered what that was.
Several things, right?
Part of that, it was other things, but.
Gives a new meaning to the word drunk.
Heel shit. Anyway.
Nothing else? Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Do you mind if I stay?
No, not at all. We encourage it.
And Gordon McKay?
Yes, sir.
I can say your last name. Want to come up and sit down? You don't have to stand. So same thing, why don't you just tell us yourself and tell us a little bit of all your background?
I was born and raised in New York City, the New York City area. My wife is from Abington, Massachusetts. And we, when I first, you know, I actually fell in love with the town. 1999, we went looking to build a house. We were living, we were renting in Bridgewater at the time. And there was a real estate broker brought us to a woods. It was just a dirt path up the South Fifth and Street. And it just started selling, and I was like, wow, this is beautiful, you know? And like, I was from a community where sometimes you could borrow a sold-up community estate. And when I asked the real estate person, "Well, how much space is it going to be in between the houses?" They said, "Well, it's a little less than three acres, and then there's state land behind you, and this cranberry barns over there." I was like, wow, that's nice. So I said, "Yeah, this is where I want to build." She said, "Well, which lot?" I said, "I will understand." That's where I wanted to go. So that's, that's how I made it to Lakeville here. And my background, prior to getting into the financial field, was I spent over 30 years in the sports entertainment industry. And 2007, we lost our largest client, was evil people. And he was 70%, 7-0 of our business. Right, exactly. And then in 2008, 2009, the TARP Commission came out where, took away 10%, another 10% of our business, because we used to supply the entertainment for all the Las Vegas parties, for Goldman Sachs, J P Morgan, Wells Fargo, a lot of the financial companies. So, you know, there's 80% of your business. So it's hard to survive on 20%. And it was hard to make up the difference. And I was being recruited for a number of years, even while Mr. Cano was still alive by Wells Fargo to, you know, expand the business and all the services to the entertainment industry. And I, you know, I never thought, you know, I didn't grow up with a financial background. I had my bachelor's degree from St. John's University in New York. I have my master's in management from Leslie University in Cambridge. But, you know, more or less, you know, I've worked as a consultant in the, more or less in the private industry. A lot of small business, a lot of entertainment, a lot of sports consulting. I've worked with municipalities as a consultant, the city of Madrid, the city of Seoul. And, you know, don't have per se a formal experience sitting on a town board or any kind of municipal board. But, you know, as I think it's previously, it's a fresh perspective. So it's something where, don't want to say anybody's jaded, but, you know, you're coming in with a fresh point of view, a fresh aspect at things. And I feel, I've always believed in my career in a cross-disciplinary approach. What might work in one industry could easily be adapted and used effectively in another industry. And I feel the same way that something from the public, my public life could be used in a municipal view to solve a problem. And that's pretty much what I am. All my career, I've always been a problem solver. People have said, "Can you fix this?" I would just have to think of a way to come about and figure out how we're going to fix something. So that was, in a nutshell, let me say, I started in the financial field with Wells Fargo Advisors, received my training in there. And I've been to the police station to get fingerprinted for some of my securities licenses. And it's a little rough, you know, but.
Say it like it is.
I don't pull punches. The, and now I'm currently with NAST Mutual. I'm a financial advisor, but I specialize in estate and business analysis. You know, I don't know if you want me to keep going, but I would take a little different approach. I like what a lot of municipalities are doing around the country, as well as in the Commonwealth here. I would think of more of a mixed use building for both the fire and the police. You kind of, you get a bigger bank for your block, you know? And I think, you know, it's needed. As the gentleman prior to me said, you know, the first responders, they're extremely important to us all. And, you know, they need a suitable place to work out of and to be their finance station. And the town as a whole also needs, needs to know and have the faith that the town is going to provide for them in case of an emergency. So, you know, and nothing happens overnight. It's something that can be looked at. Could see, we could see what kind of federal grants there may be, like from Homeland Security or from other first responder type funds, to see what kind of funding we can get in. I don't know if any, you know, if you remember, I had a college professor at St. John's named, his name was Cousin Brucey, who was a radio DJ. And he always said to me, "U O P M, use other people's money." Okay, so if you get a chance, grants.
You'll love this because all of this is someone else's money.
Well, it's my money too.
Except for your portion.
But the whole thing is, you know, if the town could get grant, grant money's the greatest thing in the world, it doesn't have to be repaid. You know, there's low-interest loans that we could talk to the state about, talk to the federal government about for improvements, especially when it comes to first responders. You know, and then, you know, I know, I think there's a bond that's, what, matures in a year or two? Is that correct for the town?
Which one?
I shouldn't say our debt drops in approximately a year. I don't think it's one particular bond.
But the, you know, as far as I could see, the town's credit status looks good. You know, we're paying to build. So, you know, I'm here. Yeah, I've got an 11-year-old at the Boston School. I don't plan on going anywhere. I kind of like it here. And I'm just, the reason I, when I started in the Globe, you know, I'm just looking to help serve the town and the community and, you know, be part of.
Let's ask, let's ask you some questions. What was that? Yankee fan, Boston fan? How do you live and how?
I'll pick the fifth.
That's all I got of it, said you're from New York.
You must work for the IRS if you're pleading the fifth.
All right, no, seriously, anybody else?
I could appreciate any great baseball game, to be honest with you.
I actually do have a question, and I want to open this up to George too, because I wanted to ask this, and I know Steve's.
No, you're good, sir. Thank you.
Understanding of the level of commitment relative to serving on a board, but I think it's worthy of asking the time commitment. I mean, obviously, obviously, two people on this board didn't make it. And it's important, especially during the budget season, that you make the meetings. And maybe you could speak a little bit about, to the frequency of meetings, so they have an understanding of what the commitment is. Because I think it's fair to know what you're volunteering for and, you know, so you can determine whether it's, whether you're on board with it.
Yeah, if it fits your schedule, I mean, it's.
Exactly.
And it's a one-year volunteer, by the way, because then you'd have to run for election next year.
Well, I mean, typically, we're getting to the busy time of year. Typically, you could make two, maybe two times a month, maybe three, sometimes four. If you get involved in some other subcommittees, which we have to participate in or choose to, it's, it can be another commitment. Our meetings typically run from 6:30 or 7 o'clock. Try to keep them under a couple hours. We've all got lives we try to live too. But throughout the year, once a month, from July, August, September, October, more if needed, but not often. But now through town meeting, it will be, you can almost plan on one a week. It's probably a minimum. And again, we try to keep them at 7 o'clock or 6:30 if it's a better time for everybody. Try to get it done in a couple hours. Sometimes it takes longer. Sometimes we're in town meeting till one in the morning.
My, my schedule's very flexible. You know, it's my own practice. You know, prior to getting to the financial industry, I used to travel almost 300 days a year. So coming to Lakeville for a meeting in the evening. Yeah, that's about 10 minutes from home. I could sit in my own bed. So that's fine with me.
Sounds like a luxury comparatively. New judge?
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, I think, so right now, I commute to Quincy. It's not a big deal. I am the branch manager there. Very competent staff. I do have bankers' hours as well, so a 7 o'clock time is really not an issue. I do have kids that go to bed around 7:30. My wife will be absolutely fine with putting them to bed without me. So I agree. But that's, it's a great point.
Yeah, I just wanted, I mean, I know Steve's been involved, so who knows? But I just figured it was worth having that conversation with each of you to, to understand.
Yeah, and it wasn't, it wasn't online, because I did look at that to see exactly what the commitment was, and it said, you know, as needed, which, you know, in this case, it seems like it's more frequent than what's stated in the meeting minutes, but I think it'll be fine.
Yeah, it depends on the time of year. And again, it's this time of year where we.
Thank you, Chris Clarity.
And the town meeting is typically in June, is it?
It will be in June this year, yes.
Sometimes there are special meetings.
Okay. In the fiscal year, what, July 1st to June 3rd?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No. I think what's certainly encouraging from Steve has come and gone, but for George and Gordon, that people even apply with that problems, having people apply. And I say that only one of you is going to be appointed this time. But don't get discouraged that there's plenty of committees that come up. Selectmen come up every, every year. I encourage people to run for that position. No matter who's up, I'm up next. No matter who's up, I'm up next year. Scott's up this year, but, but we're always encouraging people to get involved in town politics. I think it's great that you folks showed up and showed a different side of what we can do. I don't think it's that important that we have an accounting degree or you don't have an accounting degree. And the same thing, whether you're a selectman or, or other many committees. But I really thank you for coming in and showing an interest.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. So what we'll do is we'll reconvene probably next week or the week after, and we'll come up with a decision.
Absolutely.
And let you know, one way or the other.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right, appreciate you guys coming in. You can stick around if you like.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming in.
All right, let's deal with one A. Discuss the invitations from the Free Town Board of Selectmen to meet with the Free Town Finance Committee and Regional School Committee on March thirty-first at six P.M. at their Council on Aging in Free Town. This is a typical meeting that takes place in March. And probably a little bit later than what it should, should be taking place, because usually it's early March.
Earlier than that, yeah.
But we haven't, we haven't really seen the school committees vote yet. And usually we meet before they vote, but this is not going to give us, this is going to be a meeting after they vote on their budget, because they have to vote by thirty-first of March.
So I'm looking at some.
So this is, you know...
I actually think we should request that it's later for two reasons. One, the first meeting I went to as a selectman was this meeting. And I think that because we're having elections, it's good to do that. Assuming you don't get elected, it's a good way for the new person to get an introduction with that committee, which I personally had, thought there was a lot of value in my attendance to that. But secondly, and probably more importantly, is, one of those numbers, we were talking about the numbers relative to the budget.
For the school?
For the school, or for the state?
Oh, State Eight, Chapter Seventy, when the House budget comes out.
Right, it might be good to try to coordinate it more with that. So we have a less hypothetical conversation and a little bit more realistic one.
I think we just need to find out where Free Town's going to be as far as what they're going to fund the schools at. And that's a very important thing to our budget, because we're going to be meeting with all of our town departments as well. It actually, the, last year was late, the year before it was, it was actually in February. So, holding off till April is not a good thing, because we need to know where our numbers are. And elections come and go, and, you know, things change, but the town has to keep going on and go forward.
I, I agree.
And the numbers, we need to know, I mean, this, this discussed, quite frankly, this discussion should have taken place before this week. It should have taken place in February. And we've been asking Free Town if they wanted to get together. Now we're going to meet after the budget's voted on and, from the schools. And they're going to vote for a number, which is not hard-fest anyways, you know that, and I know that, because if they don't get the money, they have to go back and re-vote, it's different now.
Correct.
They can always go down, they can't go up. But it, it's important for us to do our budgets, because right now, we're, we're assuming what we can do. We don't know what Free Town can do, and we don't know what Free Town wants to do. And it's important to get on that same page.
If the advantage of doing that is to do that prior to the school voting, and they're already going to vote, wouldn't it be better to wait for the state numbers to have a better projection?
Well, the state numbers don't have any effect on us. They only have effect on the schools. Chapter Seventy hasn't had an affect on us whatsoever. They really don't.
John, what do you think?
Well, I think that if we're doing it because we have a contested selectman's race, I would encourage Mitzi Hollenbeck to simply come to the meetings, that is, they're all public meetings.
Sure, no, that's a fair point.
We can all get, we can all get, right.
Right.
We can always get our feet wet, and I, and I encourage our, both Gordon and George, whether you do or whether you don't get appointed to the Finance Committee, these meetings are open to the public anyways, and you really get a flavor of, of what happens in March, April, and May. So, I guess I flip the coin, if, if we do it because of a contested race, I'd just say Mitzi Hollenbeck should be coming to...
No, no, my point wasn't necessarily because it was contested.
Okay.
And I think that you, you raise a good point, I mean, she could just attend anyway. I just think, for me, that was my first experience as, as a board member, and it was good for me to meet Free Town's Board of Selectmen.
Right.
And it wasn't because it was contested, I mean, it's...
This is, this has nothing to do with a contested race or non-contested race. Whether there's two people running, four or five people running, has nothing to do with that. This has to do with our budget numbers for the year, putting them together, because we're going to be meeting with all our department heads, and we need to know what we need to set aside for the schools. So we need to get on the same ballpark, playing with Free Town, to see what they're thinking, so we can come up with our numbers and, and go in as a unified body of what we're going to fund the schools at. It has nothing to do with elections. So I don't, I don't understand what the elections have to do with meeting with Free Town.
The...
Well, I just explained my point.
No, I know, it was good for you. Everybody should go there.
No, no, I'm not, right. I mean, maybe I explained it incorrectly, but I think you get my point.
No, I understand.
Right.
It was good, it was good to be there, it's always good to be there. The year before, John was running, and he showed up.
Right, I would come to, to the meetings. And certainly, although we've never had an audience, I always introduce Mitzi Hollenbeck as a, as a candidate for select, selectman. So, when do we finish our round? We have our first round with our people, are we going to knock that all out in March? I'm, I'm talking all the fire, police, the, this town hall.
The last few years, we've done all the departments in two nights. They are long nights, I've, you know, if you want to do it in three nights, it can be years long.
We're trying to do them in March.
Or the last week in March.
They've asked for the thirty-first, that, that's fine by me.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
Well, my, my one point on the thirty-first is that if your next scheduled meeting...
That's fine.
They're starting at six, I didn't know if the board would want to, last time we were there a long time.
No, that's...
No, we don't want to hit...
Not seven meetings.
You don't want to come back that night?
No, no, we can bail on the thirty-first meeting.
But it will be three weeks between tonight's meeting and March thirty-first. Do you want to have a regular meeting on March twenty-fourth?
Probably should. Well, do we need one?
Well, I didn't think you were going to need one tonight, but then look at, you know, in a couple of days, just things.
I guess we can do that.
This time of year. And what you could do is even, if you wanted to schedule March twenty-fourth, we don't have anything. I don't know if you want to start your department meetings.
No, you can do March twenty-fourth. I don't, I don't, I don't want to come back for another meeting afterwards, it's just, it creates too much...
Yeah, no, we'll not have them on the thirty-first.
And I would have rather had this meeting in next week.
Two weeks ago.
Actually, I would have rather had it in February, because then we'd get on the same page, so we...
Anyway.
Are you folks, have, have you polled your people for attendance on the thirty-first yet?
I checked it out. You got the, I got the information, I don't think I've had an affirmative or a negative.
I don't, I don't mind, but the finance people got to be there. So if you have a problem with that.
I always have a Monday night commitment, but I can switch it to Tuesdays.
Scheduled six P.M. at the Free Town C O A on the thirty-first.
Six P.M.?
Six.
Yes, six.
We left the sidewalks earlier.
I'm moving. Yes.
For planning purposes, do you know what, when the department meetings need be?
I think we need to set them up, but...
If we, if we sit here, I guess if we sit here long enough, we can schedule those first.
Might not be a bad idea. To them...
For my schedule, the selectmen don't have anything, Monday, St. Patrick's Day. Is the regional subcommittee meeting...
They are, but I already have a meeting on Monday night. And I, I don't know why we didn't meet last Monday, to be honest with you.
Well, next week, and I don't know how, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
I'd say Tuesday and Thursday, right?
If you want to, I don't know if you want to do everything in one week. Last year, you did the same week. Or do two Tuesdays in a row?
Doesn't matter, you guys want to do Tuesday, Tuesday, two Tuesdays in a row?
Eighteenth and the twenty-fifth, is that what you're saying?
Eighteen, twenty-fifth.
Don't have to do it one night, then the next, get on the roll.
Well, if you think about doing it on Wednesdays, that's when the school committee meets, and I'm not sure when the meeting...
And it's also Thursday, the twenty, and the twenty-seventh.
We knew when the school committees meeting?
School committees meeting all over the place.
Yeah, they get a whole bunch of meetings.
They have three meetings on the twelfth alone, and that's the one this week.
Yeah, but that's more, that's superintendent search, right?
You're talking, so you're talking like a, they probably wouldn't have posted their regular agenda yet.
Okay.
Two in one week can be tough.
Why don't we do the eighteen, twenty-fifth? Is that good?
That looks good to me. I'd prefer that.
Yeah, that way we won't get exhausted.
Start at six, maybe start earlier, so you're not here as late, or six-thirty maybe even.
Can you make six, John?
What?
Eighteen, twenty-fifth, six o'clock, budget meetings. Eighteenth, Tuesday.
Yes.
Okay. It's fine with me, can you make it? What about Ted?
I'd be here at four.
Oh, yeah, Ted though, six thirty.
We got Ted coming out of March.
I would prefer six thirty.
Let's do six thirty then.
Well, Ted, Ted didn't make it to the eight o'clock one tonight, so I guess...
No, he told me he didn't think he was going to make it.
Right, so I don't, I don't want to schedule it around.
Let's wait for it. Okay.
Eighteenth and what, twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth, Tuesday, Tuesday.
You want to spread it over three weeks, I just have two long meetings.
Yeah, do two.
That's too long a meeting.
Is the twenty-fourth going to be a...
Selectmen's meeting.
All right.
I don't think you want to try to squeeze out into one of those.
And then the following...
No, no, I just don't have three meetings, if I can avoid it, in one week.
What time are we meeting?
I don't blame you.
On the eighteenth and twenty-fifth?
Six thirty.
Six thirty.
All right, all right, going on to them, I guess that's, that's all we have for...
Well, if they could state the number...
What else do we get?
Three, after, I, I can hold over number two.
All right, what's...
Number two, you want me to do this one? Jim Merritt was supposed to be here tonight, and he called today, he was very sick. I did attend the planning board meeting Thursday night. And at that time, they did vote on the medical marijuana, which, by law, which is a tax. Zink helped put together what they ended up voting. There'll be three parts, you've got to change the definition, or add a definition, add a table of use. And then they want to do it by special permit, and have the Z B A as the permitting authority. And then all of the regulations would fall under, the Z B A would come up with their own regulations. And then with F, if those three things went through, then would rescind our moratorium. That would be the, the thought.
I thought we were going to have town council write this.
Well, I needed to, well, we...
We are, okay. They did, okay.
They forwarded us that five-page overlay, if you wanted to do the overlay district. So I would forward this. I received copies from three towns, one of them, Colton and Page had done. So I'm sure that they'll, they may tweak this a little bit, but I'm sure it would be minimal. I think the town of Montague pretty much did it this way. And I had the sample from Colton and Page, and the planning board brought their proposal. This is what they'd like to go on the town meeting warrant.
Well, we actually have to lift that moratorium, I believe. It's up, it's up.
Yes, June thirtieth, we have, we need to, if we didn't have anything on the books, then it could go anywhere.
Right, right.
So, if it's, I would forward this just to Greg Corbo to confirm.
Yes.
Is that, the board's okay on that?
The old one.
Okay, this other item, which Jim Merritt was going to bring with him tonight, he was supposed to repair it. This is what he presented to his... Did I give you anything?
Yes, I don't have anything.
Okay, I'll give this one to Zink, since he's here. This is what Jim presented to the planning board.
I can speak to the medical marijuana.
Do I have to speak to the medical marijuana?
I thought we was all set with the medical marijuana.
Zink, I think we're in agreement with, with that bylaw going to town council for, for review. Was there anything you wanted to add, or?
Yes. We wanted to schedule a public hearing.
Do you want to schedule a public hearing without going to town council, please?
No.
It all falls into line at the same time.
Okay.
I'll have it back in a day or two.
It's, it's, the, the public, the public meeting has to be scheduled basically twenty-one days ahead of time.
Right.
I, I wanted to send it to town council first, but, but our policy is that first, you have to, this is our best guess at it. Then you have to approve it going, you know, that this is what the best guess is, and then it goes to town council. We couldn't do it the other way around, even though I...
So we approve it without seeing the language from town council, or just...
This, this language was furnished to us by town council, by the, by the latest, you know, by, by the, by the one that's in charge. I forget his name, Greg, Greg...
Corba.
Yeah, and for the Montague, and, and this was adapted to our style of list of uses. And there's really very little, I mean, it just, however the lawyer wants to write it, he wants to write it. The important point was, is it going to be a by right, a by right use, or is it going to be a special permit? Well, it wants to be a special permit. Who is the special permit planning authority? We decided that. Is there going to be a site plan review? Yes, who's going to do the site plan review? The planning board. And, and then we also mentioned that the Board of Health also has to sign off on it. So it's, it's a really cut and dry thing. They won't have any problem.
So what do we do?
But we do want to schedule that, we want...
You're going to schedule, you're going to schedule, you're the ones doing the review, right? The, the planning board is scheduling the hearing?
As soon as you say it's okay.
I thought you already picked a date, though, since...
We did.
Yes, and Pauline, I'll have it back in time for Pauline to get it to the newspapers next Monday.
Okay, but what are we doing? Are we going to vote? Are we voting on it?
For, to put on the warrant? No, you'll vote all those articles at your next meeting. You're approving me to give it to town council to get the okay, that's all you're doing.
Okay, well, then we should have done that before we went to this, right? So we need a motion to...
Well, you said it, I could, but...
Well, we should take a motion, because that's how boards act.
Rules of order.
I'm just a little confused, I mean, someone's telling me we need to approve something, and...
Just a motion to authorize in Scarborough to forward to town council for review.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's all I was trying to say, I thought we were done with that. I didn't know we were going back to another mile on.
I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, but I took the time, like I said, Jim Merritt presented this to the planning board last Thursday night. And what I've written in is the changes that they made. But basically, the first one is he found something in our bylaw for wind power, wind energy. So when he does come back to meet with you, he can explain it. The other, I gave you a copy of the map that we went to town meeting. And just in a nutshell, they did vote to do the business park, Lakelab Business Park, which is lots twenty-five through thirty-one. They voted to do six, seven, eight, and nine, which includes the big parcel on Taylor's Way as a development opportunity district. And one through five plus seventeen to recommend as zoning. But like I said, Jim left our parcels on each one. And he'll be, he'll, this isn't like his official request, but he was supposed to forward me his, bring his request with these bylaws here tonight. And I also gave you, if you want to match up, this is what we had at town meeting. When you look at the numbers, this is what we went to town meeting with. And number ten, we did do, which was the Cranberry Lodge in the industrial park. So, they are, the planning board is moving forward with, they'd like to go to town meeting with some of the...
Are we gonna do another review on this one as well?
Yeah, all the same night.
Is American marijuana, if you can do this as well? Okay.
So, these are four separate, four separate ones, and they should go, actually, it's gonna be five.
Two, three.
The, the, the wind power is changing it from as of right to special permit, which is a pretty major change, but, but we feel very strongly it's the right thing to do.
That brings up a good point, I wonder if N.J. has it for you, such that we, and will it change our green community status? I think it had to be as of right. I might be wrong.
Pardon?
I said this may change our green community status. I think we had to do it as of right, not by special permit.
That's right, but I, I, I think it should go to town meeting. This, it's, it's an important point, and if it does change it, it does change it, and, and we'll make, we'll make clear.
Rita, what was that, that, you said there were three sections? It was business park, this section, what was the other?
The one through five.
One through five.
Plus seventeen.
This is a deal.
Oh, okay.
That's business.
This is a business park.
So, it, all right.
So, I say this is one, two, three, and four.
All right.
Something like that.
So, if the planning board, last year, before we went to town meeting, voted for rezoning, which they voted overwhelmingly to present it to the town, it was then pulled back. If this is the same as what was proposed back then, why did the acreages all increase?
It's the same acreage.
No? Well, consisting of, all those are crossed out with additional acreage.
Oh, because he left out the parcel. In, for instance, in the business park, he did not include number five, which is Lucci's other acre. So, when Jim added it up, if you look at my list attached, if you add, he left one of the ones out in the business park.
By mistake?
Yes.
And it's being included now?
So, it brings it up to the sixteen point six six.
So, what we would have voted on would have been incorrect?
No.
At the, at the town meeting last year?
It was correct. He's incorrect on what he's proposing.
Okay.
He left out one.
Well, right, I, I just hate to see it when we change the form, when we say we already voted on it overwhelmingly, I hope it is the same thing.
See, that little thing, the little twenty-six, he didn't think that, that was a building of a lot. It's a def, it's a separate assessed parcel, so you have to include it.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And then he, they changed their mind on the, oh, that's number two. Jim left out the one acre over here.
Yeah, right.
That has to be included. And then...
Well, I see that number three increased from four, four point oh seven acres to twenty-two point oh seven acres, so...
That is big, because Jim was only proposing one through five. After much discussion, the, the planning board ended up including seventeen, which is fourteen acres. He was proposing only one through five.
So, it's different than last year?
No, that was in there last year. What they're doing this time, that they feel will be better, is they're doing sections, not all in one article. They're breaking it up into different.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, they, they didn't even get to talk about, really, they didn't discuss the four corners.
And that's Bobbitts, that's Bobbitts, that's the Ocean Spray Freeman property.
We'll talk about that, you didn't talk about that at a different time, I think, different time meeting?
And, and I, I don't know that you, you, you brought out whether you lose your green energy right, if you will, by adding eleven point zero C. I mean, that's a whole different thing. We were trying to rezone things that were somewhat improperly zoned. I certainly would be against throwing things in that we found in readings, or that now we want to change. I don't know why we want to do eleven point zero.
And this is an official request from the planning board. He brought this to his plant, the planning board Thursday night. I didn't know, this was the first I knew about it. And they're proposing, this will be presented to the Board of Selectmen to put on the town warrant, so it's up.
I, I, I would not move a motion forward myself on eleven B and C without understanding why they're doing it.
And town council would make a recommendation on it.
Go ahead, Zink.
We're, we're asking to hold a public hearing. We're not asking you.
Why? I mean, why, why the change? It's been, you didn't have to hold a public hearing before. I mean, you want to hold a public hearing, you hold it for solar panels?
Yes, we did, we had, we, we had to hold a public hearing to do this.
Well, not, not a public hearing, you, you're changing this to, to special permit. I understand you having a, a public hearing regarding this. But this is unlike the zoning changes that were brought to the town meeting last year. That's all we were focusing on. Now, if we want to add some things to it, why are we adding them?
Well, like I said, Jim Merritt was bringing it tonight, and he...
So, what are we doing with this?
It's, like I said, this is just informational, that this was what he was gonna bring to you, but I don't have it official, and just update you on the meeting, that they are moving forward with some of the parcels, that they would like to break it up and not do all twenty...
So, he's gonna have a pub, you're gonna have a public meeting on this?
If, if it's all right, yes.
And, what, we need to approve that, too?
Pardon?
No.
You're gonna do a public hearing on this anyways, but you're gonna, you're gonna discuss whether it should be eleven O B and eleven O C?
I, yes, if, if, for a public hearing, the, the, the public would be allowed to, and encouraged, to make their feelings known, how they...
And then after that hearing, you'll vote yourselves, or what, what you go forward with, or what they want?
No, I, 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 I think, I think, I think we're pretty certain that unless something is really completely out of whack, we, we would vote to bring the, bring it forward to the town meeting. Now, there's a separate vote that we would take to either support it or not support it, but we certainly think that something, unless it's illegal, we think that the town meeting should vote on it. That, that they decide, we don't decide. We will have a recommendation, but the recommendation doesn't mean anything, it's only advisory. But our, our vote to bring it to town, you know, we would vote to bring it to town meeting, you know. But...
But you're looking at a very specific, aren't you looking at a very specific use?
Well, I'm trying to understand why, why we were adding special permit requirements. Also, we were dealing with when we left the last town meeting, was to rezone items that have been somewhat incorrectly zoned. That's all we're addressing. But, the, the eleven B and C is the first time around that I'm seeing it.
Well, yeah, this is something totally new, though.
I have, I have, I, I'm not ready to discuss that.
And you're not holding on to anything tonight?
Right, right, but if we're looking to move it forward, if someone's asking the selectmen what they should do, I wouldn't...
You need a memo from the planning board asking to put it on town meeting.
Right, well...
I mean, why? I mean, I have all the reasons, I'm sorry.
I guess, I guess what I'm trying to say is, you have your, you have your public hearing. Someone comes up and says, "We don't like this, we'd rather have this just zoned business." And why does it have to be specific use for a wind farm?
No, no, that's, that's, that's not it. That, that, that isn't, the, the eleven, the wind farm deal is, there's a whole long set of things of what happens in a wind farm, you know, and, and regulating stuff like that. This, but part of it was, as part of some, they, we passed the thing. We, you know, we supported this thing of being as of right permitting. And we have changed our minds, based on the experiences of Fairhaven and Falmouth, in particular, of how they are doing with their, their wind problems. And we saw that we really didn't want to, you know, and as a group, we really didn't want to have as of right site, as of right zoning for this. We, we, we felt that it should be a special permit. Now, as you know, a special permit doesn't mean that you're not allowed to have it. Special permit means that there are conditions attached by the zoning board of the city. And we, we thought the town would be much better served to have that extra step than to just, you know, give them by right siding, but by right...
So, does that mean...
And, uh, most, I think most people in town, I, I, I think we'd get an awful lot of votes on it for that, if it was explained that way. When we did it the first time, when it went through the first time, it just rushed through. It wasn't contentious at all, it was just a, you know, a minor facet of it that we hadn't really thought out well enough until we saw Fairhaven, until we saw Falmouth.
Okay, so, are, are you saying, though, this is gonna be special permit for the specific use, or just this is one of the uses you could use for this property?
This, this will be a special permit if you want to use it for a, no, for, for any property that, that you might want to use for a wind farm.
But it doesn't have to be?
Oh, no.
That's, that's what I was trying to get.
No, it doesn't refer to any, any property at all. This is just a general thing. If someone comes along and wants to build a wind farm on property that they own, they have to get a special permit, instead of, you know, having by right.
All right.
And that, that's, and, and there isn't, there isn't a lot more to it than that. We just, we just rethought our position. And you're right, we turned a little less green, but a lot safer from, from the political aspects of wind farms.
It isn't, it isn't the, the far and against wind farms. Fairhaven put their wind farm up too close to houses. That was their problem. Falmouth put in, in old technology that sounds like a dump truck going down the street. They used a fifteen-year-old technology. So, they made their mistakes by going to the lowest bidder for a junky windmill system that they never should have put in. And unless you're really addressing that, the special permit, in my mind, is liable to go right through anyways. So, you can, you can talk about flicker and distance from the homes. The manufacturer said, "Don't put them that close to homes." The selectmen in the town said, "It's not a problem, it's going on dump truck, let's put them in." So, whether they had a special permit or not, it's a whole different issue. It's the far and against, and it's old technology, and it's wind farms that were built too close to homes. If we allow a, a wind farm to be less than two thousand feet from the nearest house, it's suicidal. So, it, it's a whole different issue. It's not an easy issue, whether it's a special permit or not. It's a whole different agenda.
How, but just, having a special permit or not having a special permit, wouldn't you rather have a special permit?
No, I'd rather have someone have some brains about what technology they're buying, and how close they put it to the homes. I'm not so sure a special permit solves that.
Wouldn't that be what, in a special permit, is, I, I can understand what he's saying.
I can understand what he's saying, too, but because Fairhaven was unsuccessful, they were unsuccessful. They were unsuccessful because they put it too close to homes.
Did they have a special permit for it?
No idea.
Well, that's what might show.
Perhaps, perhaps they can answer that.
A special permit, whether they had it or not, if we have a special permit, that's what would be in the special permit, unlike the industrial park we got now. You want to put a wind farm in there?
You can...
Put it in, but if you have a special permit, it's gonna tell you what you have to do.
I think you can write your laws as to what you want, or what you don't want. You do, do it based on decibel noise, and you do it based on flicker and distance from homes.
Do we have that now in the industrial park?
We don't have it anywhere.
Well, we've got to get a special permit.
We don't have it anywhere, and you should do that.
Get a special permit.
You should do that.
That's what he wants to do, get a special permit.
Why don't we have Jim come in another time, kind of go over this, so we understand what's going on? Because I don't, I don't really understand what, you know, I don't know if you have good understanding of what's going on, but I don't.
I do, I do. So, can, shouldn't we schedule a hearing or not?
I understand.
Yeah, definitely schedule a hearing.
I understand what you're trying to do, I don't know that a special permit, and you're adding it to the floor, accomplishes it. I want to make sure that we're accomplishing distance and noise regulations. But you ought to write those into the books.
So, that should be a bylaw or something?
But I believe...
Shouldn't be.
Perhaps.
We will be no longer a green community, that's my concern.
And, and we're looking to parlay the hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, I think, into another hundred and fifty-plus thousand dollars.
In our next grant round, no, another two hundred and fifty thousand.
That's right.
Is our next grant round.
That's right. And, and I don't disagree that the windmills need to be looked at. I don't know that a special permit is the vehicle. Writing noise regulations and distance regulations, ah. And we're not the professionals in that.
No. Not me.
Right, and, and like Rita said, we don't want to make a change that could mess up our green designation.
What?
I mean, was that, did you guys look into that at all?
No, I, I, I'm completely surprised by, by Jim not being here. I have, I have...
Why don't we do this?
I just know that...
No, no, I know, we're not trying, I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
Yeah, no, I, I don't know about wind farms, I'm afraid.
I think you need to, I think the planning board needs to schedule a meeting for a public hearing, but we'd still like Jim to come in and explain what he had in mind, you know? And we'll see if he accomplishes it. So, why don't we get Jim?
Right.
We need him to come in to the wall part. We don't need to do anything on that, right? That was just informational, Rita?
Yeah, just to let you know that they're moving forward with the zoning that everyone had asked.
All right, why don't we move on to the next item, then?
We will have public hear, we will have public hearing.
Yeah, have a public hearing, have a public hearing.
That doesn't hurt.
We just want Jim to go in.
And it'll be at the next, you know, on April ninth.
That one needs...
The next available now. Pauline will go right to work.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so, number three. Right?
Yeah, which we already scheduled the budget meetings, and, like, the budget books for the finance committee are in the other room. And Scott had me put together, this is just a quick budget summary, budget cluster department heads' estimates on what our revenues are gonna be. But I can tell you already, two things have changed today. The state aid that's, right now, we have a deficit headed into what everybody's requested of about five hundred thousand, but that's based on numbers that Scott was proposing. But, right now, I can say state aid is thirty-one thousand more than what I used here as of today.
And what, what, what line are you addressing, Rita?
Well, the state aid, less on size.
On the revenue?
Yeah.
So, so, number two, the seven sixteen?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
As of the latest cherry sheet, it's around seven hundred and forty-eight. But my point is, there's so much that's gonna change on this right off the bat. I got a call today that right now, we have five Bristol, five students entrusted in going to Bristol Aggie. That is gonna change our budget another two hundred thousand. So, virtually every week, these... What'd they say, two hundred?
Yeah, a hundred thousand, it's twenty thousand of students.
I'm thinking Oak Colony, a hundred thousand at the tuition. I don't have the new tuition rate. Are all five students gonna be, they've been accepted, but are they gonna get their notice back?
You, what did you say about Scott's number being different? What number were you talking?
The school, what we're putting...
Well, the seven sixteen is, is the right number today?
No.
No.
It's probably seven forty-eight, seven hundred and forty-eight thousand.
Right, right, okay, right, it goes up.
Right. My point being, that total deficit is gonna change every week, up and down.
Well, what? We want to be, we want to be particularly interested in the ones that go down.
Right.
Yes.
So, which, which ones going down, that we know of?
On this page, on revenue, I have, I don't have free cash. I'm use, I'm being, Scott and I are conservative right now on our estimated receipts, so... That could change. Free cash, right now, all I have is a hundred and twenty thousand, because I know what was brought in on earth removal receipts for the Ted Williams camp is a hundred and twenty. So, that much... So that much I know on free cash. It has to go through, it came in as receipts, it's got to clear through.
But that's paying the note.
And that's going to, that's offset with paying the note. And after that, the balance is 190,000 on that number. And I think, so I've included every, all the departments' requests, and on the school number, on the second page, just so you understand what I did in the very top, out in the notes column, that 9,875 and the 1,160 equaling the 11 million, that's what we went to town meeting with. We thought, we went in 1.160 million over net school spending. When the numbers came out from DESC in July, what I typed in the FY14 budget column, 9,665, 511, and 1,38317, you see those first two numbers? That's where we ended up being 1.38 million over net school spending. Those two numbers equaled the 11,350.
And that's kind of why we want to be on the same page with Freetown, because we're using, I'm using a, I'm actually using what we said we were going to do, was, you know, an increase, but certainly not to the extent of what the schools would like. However, the preliminary things I've heard from Freetown were, you know, through the grapevine is that they want to do level, stop level funding from last year. So we kind of need to get on the same page here, so we don't go to a joint town meeting with Freetown. And that will affect our numbers dramatically if we did level funding. Actually, we wouldn't do level funding because their level funding would be a decrease to Because we're not going to certainly overfund the schools this year like we did last year.
The Old Colony is new students, additional students?
Twenty new students.
Twenty.
Twenty percent increase.
Yeah. The original, the first increase was almost 400,000.
Right.
Was 394,000, and Mike, you've gone back, what, three times? This is your latest number, 1,367.
Yep.
And I don't have, I've got level funded on that tuition out of district folk ed. That's Bristol Aggie, you know, that Bristol.
The exodus continues.
Right.
So this is.
It might get worse.
I know, which, of course, we have to keep paying the same overhead to less students.
So if any of you have questions, you know, I've put, highlighted some of the big increases and decreases. I've given you your budget books that you'll have a chance to look at the department requests, and I'm free to meet with anybody. Again, it's very preliminary. You haven't even met with any of your department heads.
The building maintenance is how much of the $50,000 increase or $44,000 increase? You have TMLP contracting, you have building maintenance?
Thirty, I have my, the numbers when I go over it. But that's, I think, 35,000. The major part of that is the TMLP contract, but I'd like to put more. We need to fix roofs on the fire department.
For sure.
On the fire department?
Yeah, we got leaks again on the back rubber roof.
Police Department or Fire Department?
I mean, fire.
You mean Police Department?
Fire, this building here.
Really?
Yes.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, we had a rubber roof put on, but we've got leaks. I've got leaks on the front out here too.
Okay.
That's it for me.
The amounts that you have in here for, for, you see, the heading is, various articles about.
Yeah.
Police crews and things like that. We simply have not put them in here.
No, that's capital plan. They're not in here, and they won't affect.
Okay, okay.
This is operating.
Even though in some cases, we financed them through various debts in the past.
But the debt, if they approve it at your June town meeting, it won't affect your budget. For FY15, it doesn't affect your operating budget till FY16.
Right. Okay. So should we be putting, if you took an ambulance in budget 2011 as example, $160,000, should you put this out to fiscal year 16?
Yeah.
If you were going to do, if you were going to do an ambulance, we should show that large capital out there, I would think.
Well, it will be in the capital plan that you present at town meeting. And then, and whether or not, some of the smaller things that are being asked for, you would want to take it out of, the debt service stabilization, we have, we put money away.
And how much do we have in that? Is that shown here?
It's in your budget books.
Okay, but it's not on this sheet?
No.
I believe we have somewhere around 135,000.
Okay.
Which would be a nice offset for that ambulance.
Right, I mean, if you go forward with it, I was just wondering why some are, some are under here and some are not.
167 in our regular stabilization and 139 in our debt.
Just preliminary numbers. Any other questions on the budget?
We had talked a while back about the landfill. Is there a plan in place to talk about that again?
Well, in, I'm halfway through making it an operating budget. Based on the revenues Jeremy and I worked on the budget last week, recyclables on all the way back up. Looking at actual sales of permits and bags last year, when you look at the landfill budget, I've reduced some of that. I'm actually looking to the general fund instead of 100,000, as in this year, 105. Little bit of an increase. And I've started to present it to the board, setting it up just as an operating budget. But then I'll do that budget summary all over again because we'll increase revenues like 267,000, but then we have to add health insurance, property and liability to all of your expense items. And it will still work out to be about 105 for an operating budget.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, yeah, they're working on whether we should bring in houses or keep it.
Yeah, no, I know, we had talked about that, and I was just curious as I was going back through, I mean, I know this is preliminary, but I just hadn't.
It ended up being more confusing than, I actually tried to do it on a column right on the budget so that you could see it, but.
Yeah.
On the budget summary. I'm about halfway through it, so by the time you meet with Jeremy to go over it, I'll have it ready.
Okay, great. All right.
Rita, how many students is that for Bristol?
Bristol Aggie.
The 188.
You're talking five. Well, the 188, that's 20. That, I'm sorry. Let me not do that.
There's five new students.
They've been accepted at Bristol Aggie. Only one student was brought back with their request to the superintendent. I have no, there's no seniors. I have five juniors. So we don't have anyone graduating from Bristol Aggie, so it is going to be, we could only end up having one student, that one student.
So what's the 188 represent?
The current tuition now.
Oh, I know. How many students?
Nine.
It's about 10, right. If you just go 20,000 and whack, it's nine.
But we've got 10,000 for transportation, and then we have a student in Waymouth School.
Right, so is the 188 Bristol Aggie plus the Waymouth School?
Yes.
Okay. But then the big number is the Old Colony, which is the 1,367. Okay.
And on the cherry sheet, we get about 74,000 from chapter 70. That is for Bristol Aggie students. Our chapter 70 for O'Colony goes directly to O'Colony. I know it's all confusing.
O'Colony goes to O'Colony, what about Bristol Aggie? What is that one?
On the cherry sheet, you'll see it, I circled it. It's about 74,000, so if we do have five more students, we will get some chapter 70.
I mean, right, I mean, certainly you send someone to O'Colony instead of spending $13,000 a student between our contribution of about 5,000 plus the state's, we spend in 20, plus they get the chapter 7. So it's really costing 25,000 per student.
To go where, O'Colony?
O'Colony.
Because they get the chapter 70 money.
Our tuition, if you work our tuition back, it's, our bill is about 10,000 per student.
Closer to 11, 11,000.
I thought you said 20 new students, okay. Okay, it's 11. Plus they get the chapter 70 money, so it's 16.
And they're asking for a small increase over net school spending, for 43,000.
When I talked to Gary the other night, it was 2.2% in the aggregate of an increase.
And Bristol Aggie is $20,000?
18,860, but that's this year's tuition. I don't have next year's.
So Bristol Aggie is 18, but O'Colony is 11-ish.
Well, you've got to subtract out of the 188, we do get 74,000, chapter 70. And I have all of, I have O'Colony's budget in the book.
But O'Colony's money goes to O'Colony. So it's really the 11 plus 5, 16. So it's still.
That's transportation too in there. What we pay for O'Colony includes transportation.
You still spend a lot more money sending kids to Vogue schools, which has always been the case.
And Freetown spends about 19 for O'Colony, because they did not buy in as we did. We did have a big capital cost upfront when we joined O'Colony.
Well, 19 plus the state money. Say it's 5, it's $24,000. You can go to a state college.
I think, no, I think.
It's only 11?
The chapter 70 goes to Freetown.
It does.
Yeah. Because they didn't buy in like the other five communities.
The safe thing is what we do with Bristol Aggie.
Yeah.
obtain a tuition.
Yeah, and we get that.
Okay, okay, that's why it's so different. But 18's still a big chunk of change.
Absolutely.
Two ways about it.
Pay for high cost goods to have. And they pay for transportation out there. It's ridiculous.
Anything else on the budget? We'll get into it a little bit in a couple weeks.
All right.
Next week, I should say. All right, so item number 11. Request of proclamation for the Massachusetts Federation of Business and Professional Women to declare April 8, 2014, an equal payday. Board received request from the Massachusetts Federal Business and Professional Women to declare April 8, 2014, an equal payday. It's going to read the proclamation. Did miss about on Tuesday, April 8, 2014, the members of the Massachusetts Federal Business of Professional Women will join millions of American nations wide, nationwide to celebrate the Equal Pay Day. Equal Pay Day is a symbolic day which, where women earn, earning each, earnings reach a man's earnings the previous year. It will always, it will always, it is always on a Tuesday, as it takes a woman seven days to reach what a man makes in five days. So thanks to the gender pay gap, it takes women an extra three months of wages to make up the 23% difference. Equal Pay Day 2014 will fall on Tuesday, so mark your calendar. We ask, we are asking for 351 cities and towns to make, to make up the Commonwealth of Massachusetts initial proclamation marking Equal Pay Day. I encourage you to consider issuing a proclamation to officially declare April 8, 2014, Equal Pay Day in Lakeville, and to help raise awareness for this disparity. Equal Pay Day in 2014 is particularly significant because it falls between two legislative milestones that will, that have helped women advance in the workplace. But there is still more to do. In January 29, 2014, the 5th anniversary of the Lilly Ledbetter Fair Pay Act, and July 2, 2014, is the 50th anniversary of the Civil Rights Act. We hope that you join us on Equal Pay Day by issuing a proclamation, because it's noteworthy observance. If you have any questions, please contact me or something such, Deborah.
Forrest.
Forrest at Verizon. Am I reading this?
Well, we're going to discuss whether or not you want to proclaim.
I'll read it if you want.
Are we going to proclaim this?
Did we support it in the past?
This is brand new, I've never seen this before.
I don't even know if the numbers are even right. I have no idea. Do we support everyone that writes us a letter?
Pretty much we do a proclamation for the marijuana stuff.
I think once they've said no. I can't remember what it was, but.
These are door-to-door salesman proclamations.
Don't ask. Topscout can go knocking the door, but don't ask.
Well, who's going to report then?
They've asked all 351 communities, I don't know how many have voted it. But because it's on April 8, that they're asking for it to be proclaimed, and I saw that your next meeting wasn't until March 31st, I thought.
It's not much time for it.
I'd be happy to read this, I think we should do it, why not?
Yeah, why not support?
I mean, it's not an unreasonable thing, except that it'll take 10 minutes of the meeting.
You should just put the proclamation at the beginning. Knock yourself out there.
All right, sample equal payday proclamation. Whereas, hang on. Whereas.
I have the modified one that.
Oh, good.
Bring it up.
Oh, bring it up. Because I was going to read it verbatim.
They didn't send it to me till tonight, so.
You might miss something, though.
Town of Lakeville. Equal Pay Day proclamation 2014. Whereas, 50 years after the passage of the Equal Pay Act and the Title VII of the Civil Rights Act, women, especially minority women, continue to suffer the consequences of unequal pay. And whereas, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, year-round full-time working women in 2010 earned only 77% of the earnings of year-round full-time working men, indicated little change of progress in pay equality. And whereas, in 2009, the Lilly Ledbetter Fair Pay Act was signed into law, which amends Title VII of the Civil Rights Act, and now we must pass the Paycheck Fairness Act, which amends the Equal Pay Act by closing loopholes and improving the law's effectiveness. And whereas, wage disparity persists across all educational levels and in all states as women with college degrees or higher lose $713,000 over a 40-year period versus a $270,000 loss for women who did not finish high school. And whereas, there were 68 million women in the workforce in 2008, a significant increase from the 18.4 million in 1950, and women were 46.8% of the labor force in 2010. And whereas, over a working lifetime, this wage disparity costs the average American woman and her family an estimated $700,000 to $2 million in lost wages, impacting social security benefits and pension, pensions. And whereas, fair pay equity policies can be implemented simply and without undue costs or hardship in both public and private sectors. And whereas, fair pay strengthens the security of families today and eases the future retirement costs while enhancing the American economy. And whereas, Tuesday, April 8, symbolizes the time in the new year in which the wages paid to American women catch up to the wages paid for men from the previous year. That's why it's that day. Now, therefore, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Lakeville, by virtue of the authority vested in us, do hereby proclaim April 8, 2014, as Equal Pay Day in the Town of Lakeville, and urge all the citizens of Lakeville to recognize the full value of women's skills and significant contributions to the labor force, and further encourage businesses to conduct an internal pay evaluation to ensure women are being paid fairly. Make a motion, we accept this proclamation?
I have a question on that. Is that, if you sign that, does Rita have to make sure that everybody that she pays from now on in Lakeville, that the man or a woman gets the exact pay?
No, no, this is just a.
Oh, just for the day, it's.
Yeah, it's just a symbolic. Yeah, it's just a, a symbolic support for the.
That's the key word I'm looking for. Doesn't mean it's more worth a re- raise.
Doesn't mean Rita gets a raise.
No, I didn't mean that. No, of course.
No, no, of course. Right.
Town, town meeting appropriates all the folks.
I'll go with you guys. You guys know what you're doing.
No motion for me.
Aaron made the motion.
No, I made a motion.
I'll step, I'll step down the second.
You don't have to step down anymore.
I don't want to step down. I'll just second it. I'll second the motion. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
I support women's equal pay.
Yes.
I don't think any of those numbers that they gave were at all correct. So if we get a letter from Peter next week supporting or saying all animals are abused and we get a letter from the New Bedford neighborhood that wants to put the elephants in a place in, in Tennessee, are we gonna sign that kind of stuff? So I believe in equal pay for women. First of all, that's my discussion. I would vote against supporting people that write us letters when we don't even know if the letters are even close to being accurate. They mentioned a lot of numbers in there. I don't know that any of them are accurate. So that's my discussion, but. I support equal pay.
Any other discussion?
I would say that, that they're getting the numbers from the state.
And the state allows, the state allows the women to be paid twenty-three less than a guy and no one sued them?
No, not that the state is paying. The statistics they're getting from a state agency. That's all I'm saying, John, that. Got the numbers from probably state agencies.
All right. So any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's move on. Review and vote on the, to approve the selectman meeting minutes for January twenty-seventh.
I'll make a motion that we accept the January twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen, meeting minutes.
So moved.
Any further discussion? Here are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And, um, a motion to approve the executive session of the meeting minutes for February twenty-four, two thousand fourteen.
So moved.
Second?
Any further discussion? Here are none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any new business, Rita?
Uh, yes. Some local licenses came in today. Four of them. Uh, we didn't have them on Friday.
Have they, up for renewal?
Local, no, not, new one-day local licenses.
Oh.
And the hours, the hours that they're asked for are the actual hours of the event. That was questioned, I think, last time that they were.
All right, so I'll have, I'll entertain a motion to, for a one-day beer and wine on March twenty-second, two thousand fourteen, from one P.M. to eight P.M. for a birthday party.
All alcohol.
What's that?
They're all, all alcohol. It's a beer and wine.
What's say beer and wine then? I'm reading the, the application, please.
Where does one day all alcohol go and underline?
It's bold.
Oh, okay. All right, so one day all alcohol between one P.M. and eight P.M. on March twenty-second, two thousand fourteen, for birthday parties.
All real parties. They're all real parties. You know this beer and wine stuff. I'll make a motion that we approve the March twenty-second, two thousand fourteen, birthday party request.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I also have a one-day, um, permit for, same date, March twenty-second, two thousand fourteen, between four P.M. and eleven P.M. for an engagement party. Is he using a small room or?
Uh, so moved.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And a one-day, all-day local license for March twenty-eighth, two thousand fourteen, from five P.M. to midnight, the Nolan Party.
So moved.
Second it.
All of the favor?
Aye.
And a one-day, all-day alcohol permit for April fifth, two thousand fourteen, from five P.M. until midnight, rebuilding Warriors fundraiser.
So moved.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Anything else? Any new business, Rita?
That's all I have.
Any old business?
I don't have any old.
Anything in the read file?
Uh, any other? Uh, I think Aaron wanted just to.
Any other business?
Oh, yeah, um, the Legislative Breakfast, um. When was that? Friday?
Friday.
I think it was about a month ago, but it was Friday. It was, it was an interesting, you've been to a lot of these things, so you know the benefit of, of this stuff. Not to say that you don't know the benefit of it, but I'm sure you could assume that, that when you sit down in a room with selectmen and, and town managers and town administrators, there's a commonality to the problems that the towns are facing in any given region, um, you know, the budget issues, the timing of the state aid numbers, the timing of everything. Yeah, I mean, um, something that I, I thought was interesting, that we had a pretty candid discussion about the impact of, of heroin use in southeastern Massachusetts. And just about every town has seen, um, you know, a really serious impact on, on their communities due to that, that problem. You know, the conversation about whether your police are, are carrying Narcan for the, for the sake of resuscitating an overdosed person. And I mean, it was really, um, quite an eye-opener, I think, uh, you know, to hear that, that conversation go on. But that was really it. I mean, I think that we're not alone in terms of balancing the schools' needs with the municipal needs. I mean, all of these towns are feeling squeezed. Some of them, um, complained about the unfunded mandates that we all get stuck with. Wareham, for example, counted up twenty-two, and they're just considering not doing them. Which, I mean, yeah, I mean Rita's smiling over there because, well, chances are that you'd lose state or federal aid if you don't do your unfunded mandate. That's how they tie strings to it. But, but he raised a good point. He's like, look, if we, if there's some solidarity within this, if all the towns just say, no, we're not gonna take this anymore, maybe they'll listen and, and who represents whom in Beacon Hill? You know, it's really this disparity of, you know, if you're not in six-one-seven, you don't get any resources um, in terms of state funding for projects and stuff. So it was really, um, it was good. So I just thought it was worthy of, of bringing up to you guys because, um, you know, we're, we're all in this together and it, it, uh, we're all, every, every challenge we're facing, it's happening statewide, more or less, is the impression I got, the big picture look.
I mean, it's always, right, it's always the great debate, do you put in two million dollars in the South Coast Rail, or two billion dollars, or should we put it in education? And flip the coins there, you know, that they have unfunded mandates because they spend money on projects that, that someone is championing.
Right.
But doesn't necessarily benefit Lexington and other towns. But they'll be paying their fair share of that, two billion dollars, I bet. It just won't be for the poorer towns of Fall River and New Bedford paying for that stuff. That's how they get that.
If I may, that's through a bond bill. You know, I don't think that they're gonna do a bond bill for education. You know, that's, uh, current every year. So that's why they, they wouldn't do it for education. Just take the debt service that they'd be paying on two billion.
Oh, right. Well, right. I mean, it's the same thing, whether it's two billion dollars or it's a bond bill. You still gotta pay it back somehow. Someone's paying it back. But no, like you said, the unfunded mandates are, are always a problem, but they're a reality. So you either have to increase your taxes at, at the local level to pay for those unfunded mandates because the state is not gonna pay for them. I think you can jump up and down, but I, I do like Wareham's approach. I'm not so sure ignoring some of the things is necessarily helpful, as long as you don't red, wave the red flag that you did it. Telling people that you did it could be a problem.
Right, right.
Just not doing it.
Just not doing it, you're probably under the radar.
And, and the law for me of regionalized schools, because you're gonna get funded one hundred percent for transportation. We've been funded at fifty-four percent for years.
Right, right.
McKinney-Ventro, um, they're not fully funding that. Circuit breaker, they're not, they may be fully funding it, uh, in this coming year, but they didn't wanna fund our FODS. They sell you, okay, if you do smart growth zoning, you'll get a FODS payment. They didn't fund it the first year, so that's the other, uh, the mandates. But then it's also, uh, if they get you to approve something and you can afford it, then they don't fund it.
Yeah, another point too was, was the lottery money. It's not going to be called lottery money because it's more lottery revenue. So the government's going to call it something else so that he can put it somewhere else.
Unresected local aid.
Yeah, so that, it, it was just interesting how there is this, this absurd system that is just, you know, three-card monte with state aid, with state aid to municipalities. And how do you, how do you keep on top of it? It's impossible. So it was, it was interesting. It was a good, it was a good time. I mean, it was good, it was good to see it and, and hear the same issues. And, and, I, I mean, I don't know as if. It was helpful, except to, you know, know that there's some company in the misery, so to speak, but.
And nothing mentioned about the schools.
Right, right. We're, we're no different than the next one.
Most of the times, they're always, they're always complaining about the schools.
Yeah, I mean, well, I mean, it was generally the budget, the budget stuff. And there was talk about the pensions and, and making sure that, you know, the idea of the bond, your bond rating may be in jeopardy if you're not funding your, your pension liabilities like you're supposed to. I mean, we know all that, but.
Gatsby.
Right, the Gatsby. Right, correct. And, and some towns are just like, look, we don't care. We're just not putting any money in it. And if that affects us, that affects us because if we can't afford to keep police officers on the street, we're gonna have the police officers over this, this requirement. And if it affects us, it affects us. But I wonder how, I mean, maybe this isn't a good conversation for now, but there's always the threat that will, it will affect a town's ability to borrow. But has there been any, as far as you've heard, has there any towns actually been penalized for that?
They have asked, um, our last upgrade on, when we refinanced the bonds, they actually are looking at.
Like an underwriting requirement?
They're asking. Number one, they were just asking a few years ago, did you set up the trust fund? Now they're asking, have you designated any money? Because really, the only requirement is that you set up, you vote the trust. There is no requirement to fund it yet. So I'm, I'm sure down the road, um, communities are starting to put, you know, minimal amounts, five and ten thousand dollars. One community did go out and borrow the full amount, Leslie Newton, Leslie. They did, but just, um.
Yeah, they just issued a bond. And they're, and we all chuckled like, ah, great, yeah. Is that six-one-seven? Yeah, I thought so.
The state faces the biggest liability, and I don't know if they've even started addressing it.
Yep.
All right. Good. Anything else?
Just under, when you get to other items, the very first thing, the dates change. Easter egg hunt at Betty's neck.
That's what I guess.
We've got a week, that's all. Twelve till the nineteenth.
Yeah, so we're gonna have the Easter egg hunt on April nineteenth, two thousand fourteen, between ten A.M. to two P.M. All sorts of activities.
And your kids and your grandkids, John.
Yep. No, I go to those. Go to those, yeah.
I was at Betty's neck yesterday.
There you go.
You got a local license?
Do I need one to go there?
Yes. We're going into executive session?
We are gonna go into executive session.
Can I, can you just, uh, do, on the, I'd like to point out at the very end, the list of donations for the animal shelter, I've given you an appropriate one. So far this year, it's up to five thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars in donations. And David wanted to talk to me, so he did, for a minimal amount, do this plaque for all the people that have, uh, donated money in people's names in memory of. So we talked about, we may even put it up in the lobby upstairs. Like you said, a lot of people paying their taxes will see it and make them, um, or at the animal. Because at first he was gonna put it up at the animal shelter.
Have, have a couple of them. Put, put one at the animal shelter. I mean, you can have two of them. Because a lot of people go to the animal shelter. I mean, they, they, they visit there.
And he actually, uh, the Plonio Trophy knew a couple of the people and donated, uh, some of the names on the plaque.
Nice.
Lot of money, lot of money donated to them.
All right, so we're gonna go into executive session pursuant to Mass General laws, C thirty-eight, twenty-one A. Six, to consider the purchase and exchange of lease value of real estate because their open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the board. And the chair still declares, and pursuant to Mass General laws, thirty C, I mean, C thirty-eight, twenty-one A. Three, discuss the strategies in respect to collect the bargain, specifically firefighter union. If an open meeting may have, uh, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, the chair still declares, and Mass General laws, thirty A, twenty-one A, four. And Mass General laws, thirty-eight, twenty-one A, seven, to discuss. Uh, as a discussion may, may have regard of initial, initial agreement between town and municipal lighting plant regarding infrastructure improvements or sound management that exempt from disclosure of public records pursuant to Mass General laws, C four, something, something, seven. What is that?
Section.
Oh, section, okay. Uh, seven, twenty-six A, C and N, where the authorized, unauthorized disclosure of the access to records of such systems could violate various statutes, including but not limited to the Federal Health Insurance Portable Accountability Act. Uh, H.I.P.P.B.A. HIPAA, okay, I'm sorry. Massachusetts Criminal Offender Record Act, Corey, and G.L. six, section, section, it's one sixty-seven, one seventy-eight, B.K. Uh, general laws, why, why are we reading all this? C twenty-one, two fourteen, section one B and others. And not to return to open meeting. That ends our regular selectman's meeting for tonight. You have a lot of fun?
Definitely interesting.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming.
Have a nice night. Thank you.
Take care.
Appreciate it. Second.